Welcome, everybody, and to the Longmont Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. It's Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Can we have a roll call, please? I will start. We're not chairs here.
Because you are.
Chair.
I had a week off.
Yeah.
I'm a lame duck. I don't have to work. Chair Peck.
Commissioner Yarborough.
Commissioner Elloferade.
Commissioner Chris.
Erica Morris, Executive Assistant.
Sarah Arden, Public Safety.
Kendra Daniels, Accounting Supervisor.
Harold Dominguez, interim Executive Director.
Molly O'Donnell, Housing Director.
Aquila Piggy, Housing Voucher Specialist.
Tim Hall, Senior Assistant City Attorney.
Quinse Williams, Regional Property Manager.
Sean McCoy, Commissioner.
Was that Erin?
It is Erin.
Perfect, we're just having a roll call.
Oh, great.
Say your name, please, for the recording.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
I have five.
Thank you. Okay, the first thing that we have on the agenda are revisions and submissions of documents. Are there any?
None.
None, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the August 19th, 2025 minutes?
Second.
October.
Second. How may I have an idea? Yeah, so move.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Chris.
One clarification.
Yes.
October 21st, 2025, is that correct for you?
Yes.
Okay. August 19th was reported, just wanted to make sure for the record.
Right, that's about that.
Oh, so this is misprint. Thank you.
Is it?
No, then you're reading this opposed to the agenda, it's this.
Well, we correct. We have two, two agendas. Okay. Why do we have this one?
Because it's the minutes.
Okay, got it, I was reading the minutes. Thank you, did you get that correction recorded? Let's do this again. Can I have a motion to approve the October 21st, 2025 minutes?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Chris. Is there anyone from the public, are republicans invited to be heard?
Should probably take that vote.
Yes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes unanimously. I don't see any public here, so I'll close, public invited to be heard, and we run all the new business. The first thing is resolution, 2025-15, adopting the tenant selection plan for the Suites, supportive housing, and modifying the Housing Choice voucher program administrative plan.
So, Board Commissioners, I would like to introduce Aquila. She is our Housing Choice voucher specialist, one of our two, and she's going to be presenting on this item tonight.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Aquila. I've been here at LHA, just hit my two-year mark this past weekend, so it's been a fun time. As the case, or as the Housing Voucher Specialist, I'm a caseworker for our tenants on the HCV, PBB, LRA, and SRO programs. So I process their paperwork for their annual recertifications, as well as any household or income changes they might have throughout the year. I'm also responsible for monitoring vacancies at some of our properties, managing the waitlist, and then also processing the new admissions. One of the waitlists that myself and my coworker Shelby fill and manage vacancies for are the project-based voucher units at the Suites. The Suites, of course, being our permanent supportive housing property. There are 82 units there that all have project-based vouchers. Clinica, Family Health and Wellness administers 40 of those vouchers. Then LHA administers the other 41. So typically, when there's a vacancy at one of the LHA units, Shelby and I will work through a waitlist of applicants to fill that unit. And typically, the applicants on that waitlist are people who have either come to the Housing Authority window and applied, or they've worked with the representative at one of our local shelters to apply during one of the waitlist opening periods. The last time we held a waitlist opening for the Suites was back in 2023. And that waitlist does provide a preference for applicants that are experiencing homelessness. So because we have that preference, the makeup of the applicants on the list are obviously homeless and transient individuals, and that does pose some challenges for us when we're trying to fill a unit. We're often finding that people don't have contact information to provide on their application. They don't have a permanent address, a phone number, or an email. And then in the case when they do have contact information to provide, by the time we make it to them on the waitlist, it's no longer current. So, you know, they've moved, the phones disconnected, the numbers changed, or they don't have consistent access to their email, so they're really hard to get in touch with. And then on top of that, for each applicant that we select off the waitlist, we have to give them 14 days to complete the packet and get all of their application materials back to us. So that effectively puts us in like a two-week freeze, where we don't know if we're going to get a response at all, and we cannot move on to the next set of applicants. Recently, we've been trying to fill some units at the Suites, and we had a 2.9% response rate. So, I mean, you might hear that and think, well, why don't you just open the waitlist more often and refresh your applicant pool? And unfortunately, we cannot do that. So we have to work through the entire waitlist, we have to exhaust it before we can reopen a waitlist. Over at the Suites, we don't have a really high turnover rate for those tenants, which is great, and really speaks to the dedication of our staff to keep our tenants' house. However, that means we cannot work through a waitlist quickly enough to even open a waitlist once every year. So really, it's just our current waitlist management strategy is not serving us well. It's really hindering our effectiveness or efficiency to fill units, and that obviously has effects up the chain dealing with revenue as well. So to address these challenges, we are proposing amendments to the 2025 voucher administrative plan, as well as the tenant selection plan for the Suites. Those amendments would revise our current policies governing how we manage the Suites waitlist to allow referrals for the Boulder County Local Case Conferencing System, which uses a coordinated entry process to connect homeless households to available housing resources. Some agencies already involved in the coordinated entry program would be like Hope for Longmont, as well as Fall River Shelter in Boulder. So instead of slowly working my way down a waitlist, when I have a unit that's becoming vacant, I reach out to that partnering agency, let them know, hey, I'll have a unit towards the end of next month. And they will work with their agency to find an applicant, sorry, to apply for the project-based voucher program. We're confident that adopting these changes will increase our efficiency of getting new applicants and reduce our vacancy rates. For one, you know that when we get that referral from the partnering agency, that's putting us directly in contact with someone who's ready to go ahead and exit homelessness now. So we have that motivation. Additionally, the applicant has the support of the staff member or caseworker at that partnering agency to get in contact and stay in contact with us. And then they also work with them through the admissions process. So I would send, once they send a match to me, I'll send them the application materials to the representative and the applicant. They'll, you know, help them fill it out, get identity documents. Sometimes people need to get new social security cards, get pay subs if they're working, bank account statements, all of the materials that I would need to process the application and get that back to me. And then we're also looking at, you know, that having that kind of like a light at the end of the tunnel when you're speaking to an applicant, and say, if you follow through this process, it's not like you're just applying to a waitlist and you're going to have to wait for some undetermined amount of time. If you follow through with this process, we do have a unit available for you. And so, you know, hoping that that will encourage people to follow through and complete the admissions process. We're also really just confident that these changes will be successful for us because we've seen demonstrated success using the coordinated entry referral process. That's how we, or what we use with our locally funded vouchers. So I'm processing all of the admin admissions for the LRA program, and it works just like I just described. I have a voucher available, let the partnering agency know. And normally, I get a match and I hear back from them within two days. So I send them those materials, they work with the applicant, and I, like I said, normally I have to give them 14 days, but I usually get all of my application materials back in seven to 10 days. So we're already like fast-tracking that admissions process, it's been great. And then just beyond those improvements, the larger benefit of this change will be strengthening our relationship with the partnering agencies and then other community resources with the increased communication and the sharing of knowledge, hope to, you know, create a stronger response for addressing the needs and prioritizing those most vulnerable within our community. Questions?
Sounds like a lot of work to be done. I'm impressed.
Thank you.
So I just, I guess I'll just need a little bit of clarification, and I'm pretty sure you already said it. When you work, so what are you, what are you changing in the policies as far as the waiting list for those who are currently on the waiting list compared to you contacting the other agencies?
So, currently for the, well, first of all, we have exhausted our waitlist. So, like I said, we've been trying to fill vacancies. We sent out interest letters in the last month to 134 people on the waitlist. We got four responses. So, it's been great. So what we'd be changing, instead of them coming to us and, you know, filling out the application and we hold on to it, when I have a vacancy, I will just reach out to the partnering agency to supply me, so an applicant.
So once you exhausted all the people on the waiting list, then from now on, that's what you would do?
That's what we do.
Okay, that's what I, I was just making sure that the people who are still on the list are not being left behind.
Right, so, yes. With us sending out those letters and we got the four responses, we've contacted everyone on the waitlist, and we're starting fresh.
That was the, that was the, why we're timing it right now, too, as well, because we wanted to make sure we exhausted that waitlist and didn't open a new waitlist and could transition us right now to make sure that we gave everybody their opportunity.
You mentioned that during, in the 14-day wait period that you had, that you lost track of some of the people, the phone numbers no longer. Will the partnering agency keep in touch with them along the way so that we don't lose that person as far as?
Right, yes, so I, I have not had the experience of them losing contact with someone while we were working through that process on the LRA side or the local voucher side. So I'm confident that they are, you know, keeping in touch with them through the coordinated entry process for individuals that are like higher need. They're typically residing at the shelter already, so they have close contact with those people.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
I'll just add that all of our partners that touch the Suites, so DOH, Clinica, former metalhead partners, Boulder County through the coordinated entry, everybody's very excited for this. A, to, to, because of the people in coordinated entry waiting for a place, and B, because it's going to administratively streamline most things.
How many vacant units we have over there?
On, for project-based vouchers, we have four units.
We only work with, and they have four people ready to come.
Awesome.
So you need a motion, right?
To adopt.
I move we adopt.
Second. So we're adopting LHA 2025-15, just for the recording. So it's been moved by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Yarborough. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are doing it all very nicely.
Very good.
Like, so Aquila wanted to develop more in terms of what she was doing, and she said, I want to do that, so we're like, well, let's go, let's, and Molly said, let's present. So this is her first presentation. She did phenomenal, I wanted to say that, she did really great.
Thank you so much. You might be asked back.
She just got more work.
That is true.
Good job.
We're now at the LHA participation in the city's employer-based childcare program.
Let me take this one. So, as you all know, as city council members, you funded, ongoing funding for childcare for city employees. One of the things that we realized, actually, coming through this approval process is we forgot to have that conversation related to the housing authority. And so we're coming to you today because we have had one request from the housing authority. We're not sure if there's going to be any more. And looking to get direction from the board to allow us to go into fund balance so we can fund the housing authority's portion of the early childcare program. And, you know, I think probably we put around 175,000 in from the city. I think probably not to exceed 30,000 out of fund balance to assist with the reduced cost childcare program that we created for the city. So it would be operated in the same way, same fashion, we just needed to get funding from the housing authority to do that.
So this is specifically for Ascent?
No, this is actually for the TLC program.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, council gave one-time funding, and then we have the ongoing funding for the slots. And we just missed it in terms of the housing authority piece. So we're asking for authority to use fund balance not to exceed 30,000. We'll obviously manage it, it'll be mimic, it will mimic the city's program and we'll pay the same percentages. We just don't know how many people we could potentially get from the housing authority. And for your knowledge, we've had such strong interest from the city that they are actually working with the enterprise funds to see, so think of water, electric, wastewater, to see if there is funding available within their fund structures to augment it so we can assist as many city employees as we can. This is a separate outspender, you're role as commissioners.
That's great. Is there any discussion, questions? I, I move that we, it's not adopting, but allow?
Allow.
Participation.
LHA participation.
Participation and not to exceed $30,000 out of fund balance. And then we'll bring the appropriate allocations back.
Okay. So that was a motion, can I get a second? It's been, I made the motion, Chair Peck, and it was seconded by Commissioner Yarborough. Let me just restate it for the recording, to allow LHA participation in the city's employer-based childcare program not to exceed 30,000 from fund balance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes. Great, I think that's a great idea. The more we can help with childcare, the better. And it's also good employee retention, you know, too, because it's expensive.
Yeah, I mean, it's really interesting, wearing a different hat. On the RTV Accountability Committees, we're talking about RTV operations. This conversation came up there.
Really?
In terms of things that folks are needing and what it takes to compete for employees.
For RTVs employees?
Uh huh.
Take some of that reserve money, they could do it.
Okay. There's many things I can brief you on that way.
Yeah. Okay, we're the interim executive directors report, Harold.
You all want to take it?
I will take the development updates.
Quincey will take the?
Yes, operations. Okay, so we have been looking at opportunities on the horizon for our next new project or projects. We have a couple of opportunities that we are weighing and doing some financial analysis and timing analysis to see what resources could bring a good opportunity forward. With the priority being, this is similar to what we were talking about when we were going over the projections when we did the budget last month, is trying to get a mixed income project of sorts, but also the timing may come about well to do another Lytec project that's potentially more of a streamlined Lytec project. There's a couple of developments out there that have made it pretty well through the site planning process and entitlements, but then because of the market, froze. And so we've got some affordable housing developers out there looking for the opportunity to pick some of those up since they're already, you know, partway through the process. And so we're seeing if that could maybe be a good, a quick project. And then while we work on our big idea project, similar to Ascent, where we wanted to kind of flex on some meeting multiple community priorities. So we're seeing what pans out with some of those opportunities. The reason the Lytec timing makes sense is we, because we were awarded Ascent, being a co-general partner on Ascent in 2023, we needed to wait two years to come back for application of tax credits as a GP again. So that two-year period is up, and so it might be have a good window to start signing in an application there. At the same time, the Atwood Commons project, which is proposed by Brickwell, of which LHA has proposed to be a special limited partner and property manager, after three submittals, three application rounds over three years, they got awarded their tax credits here about a week ago. So we will have, Atwood Commons will be moving forward. They anticipate closing and starting construction in 2026, because they're already, they're almost ready to sign, seal, and deliver on their entitlements. And so, because they got that award, it's now a good time to start planning for LHA. So that's in the ideal world. If we could have two things going at the same time, that would be great. And we'll see how these opportunities pan out. But we do have a new affordable housing development coming into Longmont.
What is that one?
So it's Atwood Commons.
Oh.
It's at Third and Atwood.
Third and Atwood.
Third and, oh, so that's how.
It'll be 72 units, primarily, I can't recall if they're studios, but one and two bedrooms.
So is this going to be affordable on the?
Yes. It'll be an income averaging project, similar to Ascent, so serving between 30% and 80% AMI families. They're partnering with our center, since they're located just about across the street, to provide services to residents on site. They were awarded, you and your role as council, awarded them an affordable housing fund loan a good two years ago now, and we've been carrying that forward, waiting for them to be successful, and they have been successful now, so we'll be moving that forward.
For singles people?
It's multifamily, but it's not.
But you said it was? Oh, two bedrooms?
Yes, one and two bedrooms.
Two in studio. Oh, great.
What's the management fee on that?
We haven't negotiated it yet, so that'll be what we'll be doing in the next six months.
So even though we're not in the ownership structure, we'll be managing it, so we'll obviously get the positions to manage it, but then part of that is you get a management fee coming in to provide for general oversight of that. So when we talk about the numbers and the gaps that we were talking about with ongoing funding versus one-time funding, the management fee actually can slide in and add additional ongoing funding as we're looking at creating more of that so we can stop living off of fund balance.
Great, and you said 2027?
I think that it's about an 18-month construction timeframe, so maybe beginning of '28 is when they'd be open and leasing.
Okay. Do you need, is this just for discussion? Okay, we don't need, all right. Let me see, I think you're up.
Hi, everybody.
Operation.
So I'll start off with Aspen Meadows neighborhood. We're still 100% over there, which is great. Aspen Meadows Senior, we are still working through our waiting list. We've actually exhausted the waiting list there. We're now branching off to other properties to see if we can scale some people from their waiting list. So go into Aspen's, the main issue is there's still the rents, with it being 50%, right Kendra? 50% units, 50%?
At amen.
At amen, no, Aspen Meadows Senior.
Yes, they're all 50%.
50%, so that's 1412 fixed income, around 2,800 a month, which is kind of difficult for us still. But we're still working through, we did reduce from seven, so now we have six vacancies there, and some will be coming in next weekend, actually, to sign a lease with somebody. So we'll have five vacancies there. Fall River, we are 100% leased. There will be three people moving in within the next 60 days. We've given residents over there, or applicants over there, time to put their WDA notice in, so we can have that smooth transition. Spring Creek, they're still working through their waiting list over there as well. Heartstone and The Lodge, Jana has about a 250-person waiting list between the two properties, so she's pulling people in and building and getting them to come in to do their part of the work. So I have no doubt in my mind that those two, those three units that are vacant between the two properties will be built very soon. The Suites, Aquila Gakersfield, we're gonna open that list up so we can get some walk-ins and maybe get those built, very confident in those. Village on Main Street, we have four vacant units over there. Those are not ever hard to rent with the location, so we're not too worried about those. And then Briarwood, we're 100% full over in Briarwood. We have added a, Commissioner Yarborough, you asked for the move-out reasons why residents were moving out, and we added that information there, too. So for the year total, we have about 14 people that have passed away throughout the portfolio, 15 people who have relocated, relocation, moving in with family and moving out of state. It's kind of all bundled in the same thing, because they're leaving for a specific reason, right? So that's about closer to, you know, 25 people who have moved in with family, reasons being they're either not able to take care of themselves or the rent is too high. That's another reason on there as well, which could kind of be channeled into those other three reasons as far as them moving out. We're still monitoring that. Like I said, the units that we have, the ones that we struggle with are just Aspen Meadows. Everything else kind of comes because of location and just the, not saying Aspen is not as good as the other properties, right, but a lot of people do find themselves not wanting to live there. It's not as convenient as the other properties. And we jump to the property updates. We don't have any updates right now at any of the properties except for the remediation over at the Heartstone with the fire that happened, that is completed. So they are now, drywall is up, they've got the permits, so now they're working on getting appliances installed and flooring, those should be finished before the end of the year this year. And then the elevator over at the Suites, we're gonna get PEI, which is professional elevator inspectors, to come out and inspect the elevator, and that one should be up before the end of this month. And those are the property updates that we have. We gave an offer out to a property manager. It ended up falling through the cracks, and they were supposed to start today, it didn't happen. So we are, we sent another offer out to another property manager. I won't reveal that name until that's finalized, but she should be starting on the 24th of this month. And we also have a new maintenance technician, James Tubman, who started with us about a week or two ago, and he's been great.
Oh, good.
I know him, so.
Oh, you do? So will he be great?
He's a nice guy. He's done some work for me.
Okay, good enough.
But he's been, he's been great so far. I mean, he's very attentive and he's, he listens, he does what he's supposed to, so it's been a good, it's been a good deal. Any questions?
Just make sure you add P E S I.
Oh, the P E I?
P E I on that list that you compiled.
Yes, yes, the acronym list.
Well, I saw some of the acronyms over here at Houston.
Yeah, I wrote it out for you specifically.
Well, right here, yeah.
That one I did not know, but I know new council will, you know.
Absolutely, for sure.
It'll be, yeah, it's challenging.
So I had a question, you said Aspen Meadows was difficult for, because of?
So I had a question. You said Aspen Meadows was difficult for, because of the, what, what makes it so difficult?
Well, it's hard to find, so we, we asked for two times the rent when somebody was, so it's hard to find somebody to make fourteen twelve.
Oh, okay, got you.
Yeah, we have six fifty percent units there.
Because I, I was thinking the other way about maybe, uh, how close proximity to different things like Safeway and stomach, that I thought it was generally pretty.
Well, well, yeah, um, compared.
I mean, it's different. You're saying it's just the two times the rent type.
For sure, but you know, if you compare that to like Village on Main Street, um, Village on Main, there's a bus stop literally right outside the property. So it's certain things that V O N accommodates that Aspen doesn't, and then on top of that, with the rent being fourteen twelve and you technically having to have to make twenty-eight hundred a month, it's fairly difficult to find, um, seniors on a fixed income that make that much. Social Security is typically, I mean, you'll see nine hundred a month. If you see somebody over two grand, I don't know what they did in their life to get that, but that's like really good. So those are the roadblocks that we're facing right now.
Yeah, I think one of the things I wanted to say is the work that Quincy and his team's been doing, you know, we've been struggling to to understand what's adjusting the vacancy fix, and um, they're really streamlining the process, and so I think this is the first time we've seen this many at a hundred percent Kendra in a long time. Hundred percent occupancy, so that is a, a good thing, but what it's also letting us start to do is really understand why certain properties are vacant, why others aren't. So his point on the bus stop is right outside of Village on Main, um, Aspen Meadows, you have to walk a block to the west, and it's on intersection of Twenty-first and Colly or so. And then that's a busy intersection anyway, so navigating it is a challenge. And I think we talked to you all about, it also doesn't have the same amenities that the other properties have, like dishwasher, dish, dishwashers and, um, an exercise facility and other things, and so those are things we're trying to figure out. At the same time, we've talked to Kendra and really looking at, at we, how we can move through the process and have guarantors on, for individuals, and so I think it's not uncommon for us to hear of family members that are willing to help, but the system that they, we have that's been in place for, I think, before we took it over, doesn't allow for guarantors. And so trying to bring that into place, for, for example, if my mom wanted to live there, not that she could because of what I'm doing, but if she wanted to live there and she wasn't making enough and I could sign on for her guarantor, similar to what the two of us do for our kids. Kendra and I were talking about that. We both do that for our kids, and so she's starting to explore that, and you're already, to try to see if we can facilitate, kind of fill in some slots.
And then going a little bit deeper about what Harold just said about the guarantors typically and low-income property management. Whoever that guarantor is, that income is included, so, you know, you make what you make, and then if you add Harold on, you have to add his income as well. And typically, in a, in in the world, just the regular world of low income, when you add somebody else, more than likely you're gonna be over income, so then you don't qualify.
So we're trying to figure out how we can
Yeah.
manage that with the two times the income.
At one point, didn't we talk about, like, maybe it was a different property, but putting in some dishwashers, some amenities?
No, it was this one, and so they're, they're exploring right now, um, countertop dishwashers and what that looks like. I think we're still um, waiting on some cost. The other thing was the exercise, again, was this one. They've evaluated the third floor common area. Um, I think there is, um, one person adjacent to it that is concerned about the noise. And so they're trying to see if, you know, if there's a vacancy, is that person willing to live there to then? So we're, we're moving through, so all of those things are things that they're working on.
So can you have some type of amenity for that one that Village on Main doesn't have? Maybe a meditation room or something, you know what I'm saying? Because for twenty-eight hundred dollars a month?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, I need some free crackers when I walk in. You know, mocktail, something.
Seriously.
So, yeah, so those are things that are.
What Aspen's does have, they have a business center, they have a game room area, and then the third floor currently is actually quite large. It's a library. Um, and so that's what we're talking about, is carving off a portion of this library.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in terms of outside space, we did in the rehab that we did in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we did create a new outside area in the back. Um, but we did the best with the space that we had. Uh, it's not huge. Um, I think, but Village is just almost hard to even compare to because it's right downtown, and then inside, there was so much common space to do a lot with.
Yeah.
Um, so if you have a choice of the two, but, and also Aspen still has, because that rehab was a pretty modest rehab, it has the original cabinets. We did upgrades to the countertops and put on some nice hardware and things like that, but it's just an older property compared to Village on Main, which was able to accommodate a really extensive rehab.
Well, I think part of the rehab, if you remember, that was a rehab that we inherited that was already designed. And so I think what we've learned through this process and what we learned in Village is you just need to dig in deeper, but that project was so far down the road, we couldn't adjust it. Because if you, you may remember, we almost lost, well, we did lose the equity investor.
Yeah.
And then we had to come back in, and that was in the transition, so we lost it before the transition. It transitioned into the form we're at now. We had to get another equity investor, and we just had to take what was already designed. So it was just problematic from the beginning.
Does it have air conditioning? And do you allow pets there?
Service animals.
That's the same across all properties.
But that's changing.
It is changing.
For new properties, because the old properties with the equity investors, you still have the rules that are in place. And so, uh, new properties exchanging, but going back to old properties because of the federal rules and equity investors, it's a different.
And, and Aspen Meadows has equity investors?
Mm-hmm.
So I have a question, and I know that you've covered this before, but you said Aspen Meadows was twenty-eight hundred?
It's fourteen twelve. You have to make twenty-eight hundred to live there.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's just because the units are fifty percent AMI, that's why.
Okay.
That's the biggest challenge with this, is fifty percent AMI designated units for seniors on fixed income is a big challenge. And what's really challenging is when you're crafting a, a deal and you're creating a pro forma, you have to include a mix of units because it, just having all thirty percent units, you need a ton of subsidy to do that. So it's trying to create a healthy mix, but then there's always gonna be this challenge, especially in a, a market like this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Quincy? So now let's move on to the third quarter financial reports.
So I'll do, um, high level, and then if you guys have any questions or, um, but right now, pretty much every property is over in vacancies except for one, which is the Suites. Um, I know they have four vacancies right now, so, um, there's also fourth quarter, um, budget, so hopefully by the end of the year, we won't actually be over for them as well, but for all the other properties, we're, we are over on vacancy. As far as budget goes on expenditures, the ones that are over seventy-five percent are, um, there's one at A.M.S.A., and that was for some flooring relocation. We did, did have to house some people while we were doing the flooring in their units, um, so that was unexpected. Um, the Heartstone had a fire that's costing over four hundred thousand dollars, um, but it's, so far, we've gotten every penny besides the deductible from the insurance company, so I don't expect any surprises there. The Heartstone and the Lodge both had the H O fees that increased about four hundred, um, per quarter, so that wasn't budgeted, so we're over there. And then B O M had some interest, but that was mainly because they were in the conversion from moving from, um, out of construction and then permanent loan conversion. Um, so we had to expense, um, a bit of interest more than expected there. Briarwood had a boiler failure and repairs, um, but, I mean, we're still within budget in whole. It's just certain line items that are over seventy-five percent. Um, LHA, they have their housing assistant vouchers. We are over, I think it was eighty-three percent on those. Um, but we know we're in shortfall, so, um, that was also kind of expected at the beginning of the year that we would run over there. As far as the accounts receivable, there's two properties that have really high balances, which is A.M.N. and the Suites. Um, A.M.N. has a couple tenants that aren't paying rent, and I imagine demands are out, um, for those, as lo, as well as a seven K, um, balance for a past tenant. That will probably be coming to the board soon for, um, write-off, but they're working through that collection process.
When you say past tenant, like no longer on Earth?
No, no, sorry, um. So there's some current and past, so. I mean, I guess, right? Take a longer with.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
But that's an interesting point, so.
Very.
It, it, because that does create vacancy issues, so when we have somebody that passes away, if they don't have their affairs in order or they have other, uh, family members that can sign off on things, we then have to go through the eviction process so that we can actually come in and take possession, and we've had a few of those cases as part of, part of what's impacting her vacancy number from a revenue standpoint is we have people pass away, and then you have to go through the eviction process, which takes some time, which then compounds what she's doing, and then it gets even worse because you can't start turning the unit until you get approved through the eviction process, so then all of a sudden, what may look like this in a normal, normal, normal turnover is like this, and so that starts then creating a financial challenge on Kendra's end.
And if they have a voucher, voucher agencies can only pay fourteen days, um, if somebody has passed away, so they cut off the voucher, and then that full amount, um, of rent is recognized as vacancy loss, so.
Well, if you get that guarantor idea figured out, then maybe you can have somebody to go to to think it out.
Because that's the problem. There's no next typically at those properties, so it just makes it even longer for us to have to get them out.
Yeah. And that may be where actually, as we're looking at Carinet that we talked about in your role as council, where people are connecting and their service provider. That may be something where we actually bring Carinet in and start working with Quincy and his staff to work people through it ahead of time. Even if we need to work to get them ad lib items or something like that.
I think so, and, and especially the aging population, it would, um, just like, um, oh my gosh, I can't think of it, but there is an advocacy group just for our aging population, and they have, um, ad libbing people for, for them, and maybe connecting them, having them as a partner. Yeah.
So the Suites has one, um, tenant that moved out as well.
By choice?
And so they're at about nine K, and then we have two that I know, at least one is, we're, um, moving through the eviction process. I imagine the other one in the demand or eviction process as well, um, so those will probably be coming to council. And then for the vouchers, um, the voucher update is we have, we are down to really kind of where we should have been, even lower at the beginning of the year, so if you look at that report, um, basically the budget was at seven million, and if you looked at that at a monthly allocation, each month we would want to be spending about five eighty-seven, and that's tapping out the entire budget, which obviously you don't want to do. We were at six hundred and fourteen thousand, um, as opposed to five eighty-seven, and in November, we're now down to five seventy-eight. So we have worked getting, and some of it is just a lot of end-of participations. I had a, a big chunk, um, this last month, like four or five end-of participations. We've had people get, um, pulled off due to fraud. They weren't paying their fraud money back, so we ended their participation. So we are looking good going into next year, and based on the two-year tool, we don't look like we're in shortfall, and that's all within, um, HUD's realm of what our renewed funding will be next year. Um, so right now, we're looking at about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, um, in shortfall this year. Um, but with the reduction to five seventy-eight, that gives us a really good opportunity when we start to add the Ascent P B B vouchers. Um, because right now, even, I even have those vouchers outlined in the two-year tool, and we're still, um, not in shortfall, so. And we're getting paid, so that would be the other thing, so we are seeing funding from HUD, and we did also see their letter for December, so um, they've allocated funding for that, and they gave us a little extra that I didn't know about. We didn't get an email about it, so um, they're obviously working for shortfall, and, and I don't think we'll have a problem at least getting the funding for that shortfall this year.
Good.
And the number you, who we started out was, the shortfall number?
Um, we were probably up almost at four hundred thousand, I thought.
Yeah, so it's supposed to be five hundred thousand, so another example of really strong teamwork between, um, the H C V team and Kendra, and then working with HUD and following the HUD procedures to really reduce that shortfall amount, um, so they've done a great job, and we'll see what happens.
I mean, we went from four hundred and twenty-eight vouchers in January, and now we're at three ninety-seven. Oh, well, you have to add the P B Bs not leased and the issue vouchers?
Yeah, yeah.
And what it means, I think what it means is hopefully, once we get down to that baseline, um, it starts giving us, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel where hopefully after a certain amount of time, as people are turning vouchers, we're not just having to eat them to manage it, but maybe we can start revouchering, um, and, and so we'll, we'll see what happens there.
And you're not porting in anybody, right?
We can't.
Right, okay.
We're, no, we are porting.
We're porting, what is it we can't?
We can't port out to an agency that's higher than our fair market rent, so based on the shortfall standards that, you know, if they want to port out, they, but what they have to do is if they do want to port out, they have to be put on the top of the waitlist. Um, if they're wanting to port out to an agency that's higher, they have to move to the top of the waitlist, that if we do have a voucher available, then they get to do that first.
And if they do port in, we can't absorb them, so we have to. So their.
Our regional housing authority starts to pay.
Yeah, and we're working through multiple, multiple agencies that are not paying us. Um, so, um, and it's, yeah, there's several, and to be honest, I can't believe how many websites don't have any contact information.
Wow.
So there's, you go to the website and there's nothing, there's no contacts, there's no, so you have to do the contact us form, and hopefully it hits somebody. Um, I've gotten some ones that came back today, and I called, got a new name, still haven't heard anything, so.
Are those out of state or?
No, they're all in.
Man in state?
They're all in state, yeah. Most of them, I have Grand Junction, I have Loveland, I have, um, Inglewood.
So we need to take a field trip.
I was thinking the same thing, I'm like in our car and.
I mean.
I'm, I'm kind of.
Yeah.
No. Well, and if HUD was, so we did have a county, um, Weld County wasn't paying, and we had to escalate it, so the next escalation is HUD. And then we actually got payment, so, but we don't have HUD to go to now, so we're just trying.
You might be here in a couple days.
Just give me your list and I'll.
Yeah, we've got the, we've got the executive directors' contacts too.
Oh, okay.
Um, I feel like I should add one thing that relates to Atwood here, because some of the press release information from CHAFA on the tax credit award references the stuff that was included in their old application. At which point, when we awarded the project-based vouchers to Village on Main and to Ascent, we also awarded eight to Atwood. we also awarded eight to Atwood. But that is not, we are not allowed to voucher up with them if we're in shortfall. So I've already told them, don't count on it. We are officially not initially projected to be in shortfall for 2026, but don't count on it, um, because we will not be allowed to assign an AHA. Affordable Housing Assistant Payback Contract.
Another acronym.
We can't even keep up with that.
So, if you see that and get, we already got a question today from DHP, they're like, how would you do that? Like, no, we're, they know, we're, we can't commit to that at this time. We'll see how it comes into spring. But most likely, if you still, let's look at your financing again, they might have to, uh, apply for a little bit of a higher affordable housing fund award if they can't swing the difference. But we'll, we'll sort it, but just in case you see that and are confused why it says that.
Okay. Makes sense. So that's, that's your updates?
That's all my updates, I'm passing the baton.
Yes.
Well, actually, short and sweet, um, last month is really, um, relatively quiet of our properties. Suites had fifteen at the top and everyone else had one or two. I guess my biggest update is we're getting ready to rip up the boxes to get the meth detectors out and get batteries going and getting everything situated on the portal before we do the installs, which our goal is to install them, uh, first or second week in December. So, um, we'll start that once we get to the PBB and it's about all. Cameras are working well. We have a few that are down at Briarwood, but we have all coming out to, to get those working and operating and it's about it.
That's great. It's been a long time you've been working with that.
Yeah.
Couple of years.
And they worked a solid fence that was knocked down, I can move it.
It just seemed like you were always in this, like, position. Like, I can't even imagine you not being where you are right now. You should have been there a long time ago.
Well, I was in a, in a quasi way, I mean, through the, you know, credit for housing program, but, um, LHA, I mean, I've worked with them since 2010. Just not this intimately. And then some things got, you know, questionable and so I stepped back a little bit.
Yeah, thank you though for sharing this show. That's great, too. So, any commissioner comments?
Oh, I wanted to talk to you all about, I have one thing I wanted to go over with you all.
Okay. My camera's smiling, like, she knows what's coming.
She doesn't have it, I'm just going to lay it over your shoulder. So we were just talking about this, so if you all, as we're ending sort of this, this group that's been working together on these issues. Um, when we started this, and it overlapped a few councils, um, I think you all set a goal for us on building five or six, uh, new, um, affordable housing areas, uh, or facilities. So we have added, um, Christmas that we partnered on with, which that'll turn over to us in two years?
Uh, between twenty-seven and twenty-nine.
Between twenty-seven and twenty-nine, anywhere we're paying for it. But you added the new building there. Um, Ascent on Hoover is about to lease up in early January, so we're all.
Yeah, we've already started to lease up on that too, because we want to have a Christmas this year, so we're working through it now.
Uh, Xenia was another one that we did. Atwood just got approved. What else did I miss, Molly? Christmas.
That was it for rentals.
Ascent, Atwood. Then we started looking at the area adjacent to Costco as this part of it, but you all shifted that to, um, for sale, affordable. So there's five that we have there. So you added in this time period, um, index, uh, five hundred and ninety-three total units.
That's including.
That's including, what I didn't mention is you, we've also rehabbed two facilities, Astor Meadows Apartments and Village on Main, so it's.
New units.
Uh, two hundred and eighty-six new rental units, a hundred and eighty-five home ownership units, so that's four seventy-one. And then a hundred and twenty-two rehab. So, um, over that time period, we've touched about five hundred and ninety-three units.
Oh my gosh.
So.
Good job.
That's from the goals that you all set. We didn't quite meet it. We missed it by, I think, one. I don't know that we could, I don't know that we could have hit it, but that's what stretch goals are for. I'm trying to push it. I, I wanted to kind of give you a sense of, um, when you bring everyone together and you work collectively as a team and you stay focused on it, that's the type of things that you can accomplish. I don't think anyone in the state of Colorado's done this.
Really? Wow.
I mean, maybe Denver, but their scale's different. But, um, I can't think of anybody that's done this type of work. And that's you all in your role as council members, it's, you know, your role as commissioners, that city staff, that's LHA staff, um, even including our building inspection department. And, um, that's a pretty heavy lift over this time period. So I wanted you all just to hear that.
I'm really proud of Ascent, because I'm proud of all of them, don't get me wrong. But I just remember the stress level of us not being able to have that money. And I remember you asking us, do you want us to go forward with this, with the childcare center? And we all were like, let's do it.
Yes.
Like, we were going to build it or something. And, and look what happened, it worked out. I, I brag on that property all the time because people in other states and people within the state are like, what? You all have what?
Just wait until you see the inside. We got new construction photos this morning and this is so little, but this is the ECE, that's the entryway. I'll show this, I'll walk around and show this up close if you want. Um, here's one of the classrooms, like, all the fun stuff is going in. Look at the mural. You gotta drive by the mural.
The mural's up.
Part, wait, two of five, but it's all, it's all outlined.
I saw the one, I was driving, uh, my, Miss Daisy, no, uh, my mother. To, uh, and I said, look, look at this here. And she was like, um, oh, that's beautiful and everything. So, I mean, and then we tried to drive around and it was only the one up.
Yeah. She'd be very proud of that.
Super proud.
Very proud.
Hillary, baby, you all are hustlers.
Yeah, you are. And I know you were very, very stressed for a while.
They're, they're still stressed. It's like they smiling with their stress.
Yes. They've got more people who are stressed. You can, you know, share it.
Well, you mentioned that, I think what doesn't, people don't think about is, when you look at the staffing of when LHA was absorbed, I think you had, um, an executive director, a chief financial officer, one accounting position, one or two HCV, it was never fully funded, and then you had, um, less than adequate maintenance and property management staff. And so where, where you all have, where we've worked collectively to take this organization is, you have an assistant director, you have a regional property manager, you have a property manager at every location, you have three assistant property, three or four? Two, two assistant property managers. We now have adequate maintenance staff at all the properties. And, and so it's, it's hard to think about. I've been thinking about it over the last couple of weeks in terms of what didn't exist and what, what exists and how we were able to move through that. And I wish we could say the surprises would stop coming, but every time I say that, a surprise hits us between the eyes. But what I can say is, um, they don't rock us like they used to. And we have the capacity to deal with it. And, you know, the biggest piece is, um, we're not getting calls and scrambling to see who's going to go where because they have a fire and Quincy calls me and says, hey, and I go, what do you need? He goes, nothing, we got it taken care of. And so, and Lauren is the same way in, in the work that they're doing. So, a lot of progress, and I just, at the last meeting with this group, I just wanted you all to hear that because, um, um, these folks have done some phenomenal work.
It shows. It does show. And it's frustrating for me, um, and probably for all council, when the residents say, what are you doing about affordable housing? You're not doing anything.
Oh my gosh, yes.
Yeah. We, we just can't move fast enough. So, have you noticed, um, a, a growth in the, the people who need affordable housing? You have?
Absolutely.
Scary.
Yeah, and it's, um, we're seeing some, you know, the fifty percent AMI units, I think on the age restricted side are problematic. But we're seeing that the fifty percent units and folks that are under the age restriction, even in the market, are filling. And so there's, there's really something, and then what we're seeing in the older adults is there's a group that can't, they're overqualified to be in the fifty percent units, but they don't make enough income to pay market rate prices. And so we're seeing some really interesting things and it's not holistic to just the population in general. There are very specific issues in different age demographics that, um, I think are going to be some, some things that we're going to have to work on and figure out. But it's, our older adults are either slightly overqualified or don't make enough to be in that sort of, that mid-tier.
So interestingly, our, we released the PBB waitlist for Ascent, which is thirty percent income folks. Um, and PBVs are obviously, um, those are really important, especially for seniors on fixed incomes, because you would pay thirty percent of your income regardless of what the rent is. But, um, we had a lot of seniors apply for those PBB units at Ascent. And so the family property that we put together, we could have a fair number of seniors filling those, those really low income units. I think there's a couple reasons for that. I think their seniors are more connected into the senior services here in Longmont and they hear more about, like, our opportunities. I think that might be a thing. But also just, um, just knowing how, if there is a senior in need of housing that is on a fixed income, ever, they've got family members calling, they, they're trying to figure it out. So, it could be a nice age group, maybe it's a good generational mix at Ascent too. But then we also have a ton of kids, families with a bunch of kids. How many, I'm, I'm going to call you on it. We put it together, pulled us together to see how many kids, just from the age zero to five, to see what a potential, uh, like, uh, student pool at the ECE could be. And it was like, I'm not, I can't say it off the top of my head.
That's good. Keeping aging people on their toes. Keep them sharp.
Harold, how many employees does LHA have?
Uh, it's, it's about thirty employees when you consider those that are also city employees paid by LHA. It's just about that.
Okay.
And they were, uh, fifteen?
Oh, wow.
Somewhere in there, I can't, I can't, it's, um, trying to find her. Was it lower than fifteen?
Here it is. Sorry, I'm doing two things at once.
Before you take over?
Twelve to, twelve to fifteen? Twelve, twelve to seventeen employees?
Seventeen?
Twelve to seventeen, somewhere in there.
Am I crazy?
Well, I mean, part of it is they're not paying three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in two positions.
Right.
So we have eight families on our waitlist. Eighteen children under the age of five are included on the entire waitlist.
And we're, and we're only sixty percent full at Ascent right now. So, that number's going to grow.
And children aged five to eighteen, we, we haven't gathered that specifically. I'm sorry?
Is it going to be a ribbon cutting or some sort of?
Oh, yes.
Don't forget about me.
Yeah.
Now we've got that. With Ascent, they're going to be moving in, or in here?
January.
No, not Ascent, um.
I think they'll be do, doing closings in the springtime.
In the spring, so we've got a few things going.
Last thing I want to say and then I'll be quiet. I just want to ask about the insurance because we know the insurance is sky high.
I was going to ask that, so I'm glad you did, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think about, you know, the meth and, and, um, the, what you're about to put into the units and hopefully that will help us, but where are we with the insurance right now?
Sky high. We had, I think, um, like a five percent increase, if I remember right. So, the problem is, is that the, the amount of construction costs, like for VOM and Ascent, we're kind of in a, we're in a pickle because we, we have, we're kind of in the medium sector. And what that means is, we're getting properties that cost more. And HAI, which is specifically, um, insurance for housing authorities.
Smaller housing authorities.
Yeah, smaller housing authorities. They can bundle and give us a better discount on our insurance, but like Ascent, HAI can't cover that property because it's too expensive. They would have to insure us, insure themselves to insure us. So they'd have to get more insurance to be able to insure the, the total cost of the property. So our economy of scales is not large enough to get into the open market and get seed discounts there. So we're kind of at this, like, you know, until we get more properties under our, our belt and get a more, higher economy of scale going out to the open market, it is just too high priced for us. So, we, I mean, right now, we fit all the insurance within the budget, um, that you guys approved last month. So, and that was with all the new costs. But, yeah, who's to know?
Right.
I mean, luckily, we're not in, our properties aren't in a disaster zone like some of the other agencies, um, such as Penrose. Penrose was saying, I, I thought they got a fairly decent deal on Ascent. I don't know that we would get the same cost as they did, but they said most of their properties are in those, um, disaster recovery zones. So they're seeing increases just because of that.
You probably don't hit no damage meth units, um, because that, those were very expensive.
Well, the good news on that, Quincy talked about it earlier, is what's the name of that group?
Uh, Seventy Services.
So the phone that we talked about, they're now starting to use that and they're having good luck and we're not seeing as many, um. Full guts.
A lot fewer.
A lot fewer.
And we have zero down units and have had that for some time. It is a, we're in a different place than we were even a year ago. And this was one of the big scary, scary things that kept me up at night amongst many. But it's like weird, we're rocking and rolling there. It is a different world.
They told us it has to be a very extreme case for them to have to gut because they can just clean. So, we do good.
And Sarah's about to install seventy-five meth detectors in, at the Ascent property.
Wow.
Okay. Been working on that for years too.
It's a work in progress still. Now it's seventy-five more.
But I'm going to share that, that wealth a little bit.
Oh, for sure. Right, I love it.
Motion to adjourn.
If there are no other comments from commissioners, then I do.
I move, will you adjourn?
I'll second that. This is getting moved by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Chair Peck, that, Lee, and all those, and they just say, hi?